I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Just because we're a little bit late. The Running Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is complying with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meeting Act. The time and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying in retrospect as well as posted notices in Barrow Hall, Running Post Office, Runaby Library, Marygold School, Align Banglin School, Grace Downing School, and Runaby School District website. We'll call board members.
Ms. Dare?
Here.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Trabzon?
Yep, here.
Ms. Davidson? Ms. Farrey?
Yes.
Ms. Trent Haidliazzo?
Here.
Ms. Panzarella?
Here.
Ms. Spalding?
Here.
Good for her.
Also present Mark Ainucci, Superintendent, and Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction. At this time, there are no presentations, so we just need to go over the agenda. So I will begin under reports. Superintendent's reports, Principal's report, Nurses', Building and Grounds reports, Special Education report. I, um... Any questions there? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for my minutes. Thank you for my minutes.
Do you want your paper minute?
Yeah. I, I know, I, I actually write on it, so I, I write, I write on the paper. I'm not, I'm not up to date with all of that yet. Okay, then let's go to property and transportation, new business. You'll see there are use of facility for the eighth grade dance, which is always a big to-do in our town. And then a few field trips next week. Looks like third grade and first grade meeting pen pals and old school, new fourth graders. I actually did have a question under proper, under transportation. The first student renewal, was that one of the routes that we wouldn't be able to do with our own bus?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions there? The E S Y is Extended School Year, so that's summer transportation.
Could we go back to that one you had? Is, can you just clarify for the board why we can't transport that student? Is it because of medical, is it medical thing?
Based on the number of students that we're transporting. And as of right now, I mean, right now, Chad, what you're approving is the fact that we're gonna use first student again next year. One bus that we have would not be able to do all of the runs that we have.
And get them all done.
And the main purpose for the bus was to also offset the side transportation jobs that we have that we were paying a lot out to, to the other companies. However, if there is a run, like a middle-of-the-day run, we can always go to first student and revise what we currently have and say that we no longer need it. Because with transportation, things change all the time with the number of students who we have, or if someone comes in, or if someone leaves. But this is pretty much stating that we are renewing the contract with them, and based on that percentage, we're allowed to. So since they're not going above that CPI cost, which is determined by the state, we're actually able to keep the, what we currently have.
Okay, thank you. All right, under personnel, if there's nobody, uh, no other questions, we have, it looks like one to twenty. Uh, we have a few resignations of staff members. Support staff. Food service managers, technology coordinator. Art teacher. Flight cafeteria playground aides.
I have a question.
Yes?
Um, I see the number, the personnel number three. Acceptance rate correct? She's, she's with all of us at her. But then Deon, someone's number...
She's gonna carry on. You're gonna ask her something?
The summers?
Yeah, she's gonna continue. Which will be good for us, because she knows the kids can work with them.
Agree, I just wanted to make sure that was just, we weren't approving someone who's, we need to do something. Thank you.
So it's the Chromebook, how is the online summer program, um, numbers, are there a lot of kids sign up?
I have twenty kids right now.
Awesome.
Um, I posted on Facebook today.
Okay.
Which I'm sure students will love. To all parents of students in the sixth and seventh grade who might be interested, it's not too late to sign up.
Awesome.
Um, I think once we start collecting Chromebooks, we might also see a higher increase in participation.
Okay. That's good, that's, that's still good.
The question was also, I'm getting, oh, I'm sorry. Question from a lot of parents is how many things do the students need to sign up for? And we're looking at it as an enrichment enhancement type of program.
Right.
So if they wanna sign up for one course, that's fine. They get to choose three different options, and from there, um, they'll be given an acceptance letter with the approval code to get into each of those courses.
Okay.
And then we have teachers who are assigned to those classes.
Right.
And you'll see, we approve that, that there's flexibility with it, since those numbers are gonna change.
On the website today, I looked at all the courses, they really look like, it's like, ah, they're hip and cool.
We told, we told them they had to, uh, target it to, target it to that.
There's quite a few that I was like, ooh, that's, that's different.
Sitting tweens, nutrition, math activities, um, a lot of like real-world math activities. Coding, which was really big this year, across all three of our schools. On where the students are actually programming different things was one of them. We kinda just keep them engaged over that time that they're out of school. So, um, we have courses set up for ten weeks, so they'll run for the ten-week period.
Okay. Yeah, I, if you, if you look on our website, you can click on it, it's really, there was really a lot of options, I thought it was cool.
And we got it at the last second today with number twenty, we just approved all staff, um, an eight substitute E S Y program, just in case something happened. Remember next year, we're gonna want to wait nine months, we should, uh, I don't know, it's my own pitch, you know, she would already before, so it's not...
And there's instructional aid?
Yes. Some teachers should also, if they didn't get one of these positions, they'd also be interested in paying an aid for that position as well. And aside, um, Sean and I have been, we met with Barrow regarding the summer rep program. They're helping to, um, kinda get some more interest in that. So they're gonna run their program this year at Banglin School, top three. Some people would have an opportunity to be a part of our summer E S Y program, some enrichment program there, plus then if they want to send the kids to Barrow Summer Rep.
James outside.
What is going on with the two rep programs, is that right? Isn't there two different summer, there's only one still?
Yeah, it's only one still.
The, the last year, the issue was that it runs at the same, it runs at the same time of day that, um, the Extended School Year does. So you have the families that would definitely take advantage of summer rep but couldn't, because they took advantage of the program here. So I think it's a huge thing.
It's a, it's a, it would definitely...
I was the fill-in, like I worked for, I worked for, you know, summer rep for Barrow, and it was, it, it was down simply because of that.
So an E S Y system, we could help maybe get one more staff members to be the director of the summer program?
Right.
A little more, yeah. Identify the kids, know the kids a little more, um, maybe come in there and tell them, they felt like some instruction had fallen the last five years as far as activities the kids are doing, even simple protocols are a problem. So Dr. McCarron and I, we've also worked with programs with them, give some ideas and, we're having it. So, um, I actually posted that the other day to our staff, um, to let them know. I'll be working with them next year when we set up. Where the director is, we'll have the opportunity to hire. We usually use high school kids, um, those kids can come back a little bit, also some junior counselor, maybe seventh, eighth graders could be involved with that, so...
So that program's not directly connected with us, um, but we're just assisting.
So they have a use of facilities in?
Yes.
Let's hold up.
So that'll be on our G M?
How's, so extended data will go for twelve summer reps? So how will that work for lunch?
They will bring her up lunch. We'll just, we'll connect it, I don't know if they'll be going somewhere soon, we did convince them, uh, a lot of pool. They're gonna use the holiday, um, they think they're raising...
I think that kind of slowed down anyway.
Yeah. They'll raise some activities in, uh, zoos and different things, they're bringing a lot of kids. But we'll send out some home information out in the past as well, try to generate interest. It's a great opportunity for parents if they, you know, have a kid in E S Y program or enrichment. Or something, someone, one of these tools, kids, kids sometimes don't like to have them working in summer. So maybe not at five o'clock or two o'clock, maybe not twelve o'clock, they can...
They're gonna like gaming, sports, things like that.
Sports camp, maybe one at a half, or...
Shot, maybe at twelve.
We'll give it a shot, see how it goes.
Well, not to necessarily, even just getting a shot, I think inside of the box, in my opinion, is always a plus. We're trying to engage community, and that is, of course, one of the ways to engage community, those that try to run things, you know, together as a whole with it. Always be, it's kinda separate, you know what I mean, so...
Is that a run Monday through Friday? I'm telling the, our, our son, for that, on the same date, June twenty-second, I believe, July forty-first.
Sounds good, does anybody else have any questions, uh, any other questions under personnel? If not, we will move on, it looks like there was quite a few things added under finance, so let's take a look at those, please.
Yes.
My office has been working very, uh, hard on trying to get all the contracts in now for next year. So you won't be seeing really many contracts at all in the June board meeting, um, just so that way we have everything in place and ready to go.
Um, one thing I will say that if you are planning not to go, did you reach out, I don't know, I shouldn't ask you this, did you reach out to every board member?
Regarding?
Regarding the, um...
Fall conference.
Fall conference?
I signed them up, I can always go back and take people off, which we did.
Oh, I can't leave them this year, because I share some hot mess from them.
Which, which we did last year, so as of right now, everyone's registered.
Okay.
However, that can always change, and if you have seven or more people, we do the group rate anyway, as far as getting into the conference.
Oh, I, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about if they're planning on staying or not.
We can have them up to the week of.
Okay.
I think last year was seven days notice.
So, Sam, you picked up that I, I realized it too, that one of the secretaries in the office had put down for three nights, but they'll only need two nights.
Yeah, did you see that email back? It was two, it was two, she put in for two. It was, I'm sorry, she responded, I think, just to me. I think I sent to everyone, yeah, it's just the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Those two weeks.
Tuesday night, Wednesday.
Yes.
Right.
Remember that camera that we were looking at when I shot you that email? About having all of that, when I was doing it, and then today, my friend...
Yeah, so you can go back. That's a civic time. Um... Yeah. Yeah, well, the kids were off that Thursday, we're coming in that Friday.
Hey, that, that's what's on.
Right, I know, but I was wondering why...
Well, I was, I was ready to keep getting people for, for one, it's a hot, it's the Halloween...
Eleven to seven, have them work, have, have them come in for conferences eleven to seven on Friday, October thirtieth?
And then...
No, that's not what I meant.
But that's what it would've been, I think, that's what I said in my email.
Oh, okay.
The thirtieth would've been the Friday.
Right, I understand.
And then Halloween is Saturday.
Right. I know what I was thinking was why wasn't it on Wednesday night after the fact? It was just times like...
Because they were here, I think, or we had the, we had the, um, the board... Board meeting? The conference, the conference. Oh, Atlanta City? Yeah.
Got it.
So it's Thursday, Thursday's a day off for the kids, and then...
I understand.
And I know usually Thursday's not a full day, so we have an opportunity to be in conference.
Usually, usually Thursday is when we have our main day of trainings in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions there? There's a lot, I don't know.
Um, I have a quick question. What's S G P K?
South Truth Technology Partnership, and that's through Sterling High School. And we are working with them in terms of managing as a shared service. And what they do is they've been working with construction partners throughout the states, so, in school districts. So they're helping us manage to make sure that everything with the roofing gets done. They'll have people here regularly to make sure that they're managing the jobs and on site, to make sure everything's done in the time that they're given.
Is there a price?
It's an overhead cost that you would pay for a management company. It's minimal, but everything fits within the grant now.
Okay.
So like, nothing goes over, we're not paying to die over that grant amount, and they actually have to go below that grant amount to make sure that when things come up, we're able to cover those costs, which they, they build that in. So there's already a ten percent overage built in for the pricing, realizing like, once they get off the roof, where are they gonna find us? Um, and take all those things into consideration.
Okay. So it's almost like insurance service? To make sure we know correctly.
And what might happen is, is like, the state might not give us the full amount of funding based on how much we actually spent. And based on the money that we put into that account, we might end up having to receive that back in toward general fund, once everything is said and done.
Because the grant's based upon how much you truly spend.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I mean, they...
And that's, of course, is an estimate at this point, they have to weigh.
But they always, they always try to go above that estimate to make sure that they're covered. And like, if we're saying that the whole thing's gonna cost three point one million dollars, that's not gonna come out to be four point two. We're not gonna be able to cover that, you know? So all of that was taken into consideration when they first wrote it up, two and a half, three years ago, yeah.
Any other questions there? All right, under curriculum, we have, um, item one through six. Mr. Peely, we're gonna have time, because we, we, we're at the end of our agenda.
Okay.
Show that on your, can you set that up?
So, um, and then this evening, uh, we have, if there's no other, um, if there's no other questions there, we will be going into executive session for, um, review of our Qs and personnel issue matters there. Go ahead.
Um, Ms. Spalding had asked me to find out about a run for school board and when the deadline would be. Just like last year, we will be posting all that information on the school district website under Board of Education. The deadline to get your paperwork in is July twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. We will have three, three-year terms up. We will also have one two-year term that's up. So we have a total of four positions that will be up this year.
Because Ms. Peely paperwork, remember?
Am I this year?
Ms. Anderson.
Who's this year?
I think you remember how we needed her for...
Us three?
So am I this year, or is it... Wait, no, I wasn't last year for training, I said, saying I was. He goes, I just wanted to let you know you have to have your paperwork, and myself just left to be, and I go, really? And he said, yeah, I go, I, okay.
No, it's, it's Chad, Chad, Pat, myself, and then, um, Missy, because remember, they messed her off, they messed up her, the writing?
Right.
So they didn't, we weren't aware, so she, she was only eligible for the one year. So she has to run for two years, she wants to run.
So I don't, I'm, I just wanna make sure you're not gonna text me, um, Dr. McCarron, and tell me like, you know, three days before that.
I'll give you at least three out of seventy-two.
Which means Chad's about to be in.
I think I just left government's work for the second, I wouldn't tell them about it.
I know, I can run that course on my phone, seriously?
Gosh, gosh, you have to be taking it.
Um, okay, so at this time, the agenda is over, so Mr. Ainucci asked, you'll see that we had a presentation, um, from the grading committee for both school scheduled, so what we're gonna do, since we have another presentation and we have time, we're gonna ask Mr. Peely to do that now. Mr. Peely?
Mr. President provided background.
How about I move? Find a way? Probably.
I don't, I don't have any, sorry, so much flash slides, we're there. Uh, so I just wanna kinda communicate some dialogue that we've had over the year. Um, as you know, through principal reports, and I'm sure through, um, curriculum, um, child site, E M A, and student parent reports, we've been trying to articulate with surrounding school districts, specifically Black Forest, Plague and Troyton, uh, Boston Township, and Bellmark, just for transitions, um, going from the middle school to the, um, high school level. But as a whole, we're just trying to make transition smoother across the entire district, starting from preschool three-year-olds all the way to eighth grade. You know, that's just a goal, and it's, it's always a challenge, because sometimes there's a distance between the two. So, um, what we did was, um, some of the concerns that came out through articulation, again, some of them were, um, from Troyton, some of them were, um, Troyton kinda saying that Bellmark and Austin could be on the same page. It was just some concerns, and it was good dialogue that we had. Um, and the consistency at both between grade levels and transitions to, to both in Troyton. And what I mean between grade levels is, as of right now, fourth and fifth school, let me still, let me go back. Um, and she has me fill me in on what I'm describing, just right, K to three-year-old now is the developmental report card. So it looks at, um, skills that should be known at a certain grade level, and it produces feedback on the report card, how those students progress throughout the year. Can I sum it up a little bit? Okay. So when they get to the fourth grade, we go more to a, um, a grading system with letters, A's, B's, things like that. And then six, seven, eighth grade, we go to, um, a numeric grading scale. All right, so one of the things that we were trying to do, again, for the district, is just formulate that consistency between, between all of them. So this year, um, I was the last former committee, which was, we, we talked about a lot of things, but one of the big things was the grade scale, especially the original, because of the developmental report card, it would have been affect, um, taking it down. So who was, everyone in the district, where they asked if they wanted to be on the grading committee? We had teachers, we had administrators on the committee, it was about ten to twelve people, depending on their availability. And we just had dialogue, again, about percentages of homework, what homework counts, you know, how we should be reporting to parents, um, and also, um, the grading scale as far as what represents an A, an A, an C, and a six, okay? And through the committee, one last thing. And finally, one, when we had these dialogues, this was all shared through Home School and Council with, um, um, both parents who participated in those meetings, just to get their feedback from, from the, from the public, which is well received. Thank you, Dr. McCarron. Okay, so, um, it was decided by the grading committee that this will be on your new spec, our new scale. And it's gonna take you, give you a minute to look it over, I won't read everything to you, but the biggest changes are, it, and I'll present this on another slide, but just to let you know, this is going to be the incoming, next year's incoming freshman class at Troyton, this is gonna be their grading scale. Okay, and as you can see here, what we have on the left is the, um, numeric ranges. Okay, and the biggest change is we dropped, it used to be a sixty-nine below would be an F, now we dropped it down to a, um, below a sixty-five would be an F. You can see how it aligns to letters here, we have pluses and minuses for each one. And then something, and, and I saw this right from Troyton's guidance department, they were, they were generous enough to share, and they gave me a, um, another numeric average, which we can use for aligning our pre-algebra, algebra, and then as they go in.
They go back and then readjust, I guess, all the kids, would be also, if you're a senior, the last three years, would you adjust it to that?
You need a senior at Troyton?
You're gonna be a senior this year.
I don't think they're doing that, I don't know.
In their G P I study.
No, they had to start a freshman new class, it was the incoming freshman.
Right, and this, like I said, this, they went to a new grade, maybe, maybe three years ago, they went to a new grading system. This is actually the grading system that will be for the incoming freshmen, so our eighth graders will start out.
So seniors next year in Troyton, I'm asking, they, they will or not be on that grading system?
It's not the exact same, it's the same, I believe it's the same numeric averages, but they don't have, I think, some minuses and pluses in there. It's a little bit different. I can't, I can't, I can't answer a hundred percent on that, because, um, I'm not exactly sure what they're using over there. I asked more for what's, what they're using moving forward. Okay, so just some changes to let you know, um, all students, we talked about consistency from fourth and fifth, traveling to sixth, all students will receive a numeric, um, grade on their report card. Um, and I know that for all subject areas, specials included. And this is again, because we have some teachers that teach, you know, um, across the grade levels, and this way I don't have to worry about whether they give a number or a letter. Now, I know the other concern is, well, sometimes parents like to know, did my kid get an A, a B, a C, or D? We're still gonna maintain a key at the bottom of our report card, which will simply let the parents look at the number, and then they'll just align with the key, and they'll say, my kid got an A, a minus, a B plus, um, so they, they have access to both of them. Amazing. Okay.
Chad?
Okay, so, um, the one thing that we thought the grading committee thought would be a good idea, because of lowering the, the As and the Bs and so forth, is right now we have three honors, we have distinguished honors, we have honor roll, and then we have honorable mention. And because we're lowering the grading scale, which will, will make it, um, I mean, easier, make it more attainable for kids to get distinguished and honor roll, we're gonna get rid of distinguished honors, okay? Or some, yeah. So just to be clear, distinguished honors, these are all As, and then honor roll is, um, you need to have at least one A, and then the rest have to be Bs.
Why?
Yeah.
Why do you have to have one A?
Um, it's, which, kinda a little bit, to be honest with them.
I thought that honor roll is As or Bs, anything above the E. Well, next year will be E, not, it was, it was higher than E here, but I thought that even if you had straight Bs, you still would have honor roll.
Then like Troyton, we, we, I didn't mean...
No, I'm talking down here, I'm not...
I've never, I, I've never seen it, I've always seen we, we have one, that's only a letter, we say we have one A.
So that's like in our policy somewhere?
That's in our grading, like our handbook?
Okay, 'cause I, 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 I thought, I thought that if you had, whatever our Bs were, I know they were, I, I, they were higher than...
Bs are eighty-five to ninety-five.
But next year they're gonna be eighties.
Right, so now we need...
So, but that's how Troyton always was, eighty. So, but if you're, I never understood, I never, I never knew that at least one A.
I think to me, um, to be honest, I don't have grading, so I'll definitely be accurate with, if we follow our policy. I think the, um, old characteristics for honor roll have always been A's and Bs, um, so that they put the A's at one A qualify. But let me get a noise in the air.
Yeah, it's fine.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So you said that the specials will also be graded. Will that be incorporated into this As and Bs with honor roll and honorable mention, or is it just major subjects?
No, it was, it's always has, yeah, it's always incorporated, they take everything into account for honor. And for any kind of honors, they take everything, you can't have a D in gym and have As and everything else, and make, um, same count.
Oh, okay. It is always so good.
They will.
Whatever.
They're changing, yes, yeah, they won't get, like, they won't get an O or an S, anything for the fifth grade anymore, they'll get a number grade.
So they get a number grade in, at, at that point for their specials, like art?
Yep.
So, just put it out there, let's say you have a kid that has, let's just even say Bs and, and an A, and then gives a C plus and R, uh, an extra curriculum, or, or, or the other...
And a like it.
Right, like an R, H, and something like that, that's, that's when you keep them all honor roll?
I mean, it does now, yeah, I mean, I don't say...
Well, they don't get that now, though.
Yeah, but they get, in fourth and fifth grade, and, and let me go back, I'm on this recording, in fourth and fifth grade, they get letter grades for everything, they don't have the Os and Nesses.
So they get those Nesses for art and all that, so...
No, they get letter grades. I can pull a report, report card, and, and I can pull one of Les' report cards, but I, as far as I know about it, there's never been, never been a cash bill. Okay, let me get our report card, and I'll be right back.
I thought, I thought they never, it's a, it's a great...
Yeah, 'cause I, I know, like, uh, 'cause I know with Ms. Paul, we, we had a problem because she was giving a number for summer, and just it was a preference, and it wasn't a letter. I've never seen, I, the only thing that they get for Honda, they get O, S, and... Or not for stuff for, um, special, but I'll pull a report, because I think it was in time. Okay, John, please. All right, so why hasn't changed good, again, just the alignment with Black Forest, Plague, Reson, and Boston Township, um, you know, so when all our kids transitioning into ninth grade, they'll, um, all have the, um, grading scale, the user grading scale. Incoming freshmen, I talked about this already, there are... Incoming freshmen, I talked about this already, they're, they'll, our eighth graders right now are probably knowing this grading scale, so our eighth graders next year will be used to it. For me, I think of the numbers themselves, it were better, better, or I shouldn't say for me, for the grading committee, we said that it's a better indication of where the student falls in the letter. Like, when you're a fourth or fifth grade parent, you can get the B, I would wanna know the parent, is it a nine-two or is it an eight-six? Because you're real close to an A or you're real close to a C. This gives a parent the option of seeing the number and also aligning it to the letter if they would like to know that information. And then again, that third column over there, the four-point-o average that was always in the right, this will help with our placements going into seventh grade, pre-algebra, eighth grade algebra, and also in meeting with Lynn over Black Forest Pike, it gives us a better indication of her placement going into their ninth grade math assignment, whether it's geometry, whether it's.
Mr. Peely, a few of us had concerns and since you have a grading committee.
Bless you.
Bless you. About like consistency throughout, let me just give you an example, so if my son is in fourth grade and he has teacher A, right, and then my twin daughter is, has teacher B, and the, just the lack of consistency, now, we're, we're not trying to say that, that teachers all have to do the same thing, however, in our district, since we're going towards like what Black Forest Pike does, like, you have to have a certain amount of quizzes and a certain amount of tests, like, you can't have one test and that's what your social studies grade is. You have to have three tests and you have to have a couple quizzes. And it has to be, now, I can have whatever test I want, I can have a teacher made test, I can have a publisher, publisher test, I can have whatever I want. I just, it just feels like a lot of parents and even board members feel like there's lack of consistency in grade levels, and I'm not just talking about fourth, I'm not talking just about just that whole school, I'm talking about at elementary schools as well, where, you know, like, kid A, if he was in, teacher A would have one report card, but if he was in teacher B, he would have a different report card. So I know that I'm bringing this up because I know we were planning on bringing it up at the board retreat this year, just that, and we, I already spoke to Mr. Aronucci about it, like, we're not saying that we wanna, we want a uniform classroom, but I can tell you right now that the course I teach and the course is, is, I'm about the same week kind of, we use the same book in Highland and Timber Creek. Now, I do different warm-ups, I do different do-nouts, I get different quizzes, I create it, we share, we collaborate, however, across the district, if you walk into a geometry classroom, you best believe if, if, if teacher A at Troyton is on section one-point-four, teacher A at B and C at Highland and Timber Creek are on section one-point-four. We just felt like there's just a huge discrepancy amongst teachers and then that, in essence, affects our students, our children and our students' report cards.
Absolutely, and I agree with that. And just to back up a little bit, you said something about getting, the kids aren't getting different report cards, what you're saying is, teachers are altering the curriculum in like the same grade levels, so like, if Mark and I were twins and we were in teacher A, teacher B, we would, you were saying what's coming home seems like a totally different curriculum.
Yes, absolutely. So if you're giving one test in one class and you're, you're bringing in, you know, thirty different grades, are we grading homework or aren't we grading homework?
Right.
My class grades homework, your class doesn't. So, so now, so now, because I thought homework was for remediation, which we've had this conversation, we know, is it remediation, is it not? Is it complete, is it not? Is it fair to grade or is it not? Is it a penalized thing? Cause personally, I mean, if we're gonna go there, that's what it all comes back to, or, I mean, we want them to have the remediation, I, I don't mind sitting and doing it, I just want the same standard to be applied for everyone, cause I just don't feel that if your child has one teacher, it's fair for his homework to be graded and held against them, for lack of a better word. Now, I don't morally grade, I don't sit and do homework, cause I feel like, how does the teacher understand what is learning? But without even getting personal, if, with, with given specifics. With a grading committee, like, that's a concern of the board. Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what, I mean, it would be my pleasure to continue the grading committee.
And I just wanna let you know that no, no, no board member wants to take any creativity or, right, anything away from a teacher. That's not, that's not our goal. Our goal is, like Amy said, is to have consistency and standards. Like, is it, yes, we're doing it, or is it not? Cause I remember, I mean, you know, my daughter's gonna be nineteen, I, I, I wanted to know her third grade social studies grade, why it wasn't an A, why it was a B plus. Tell me how many grades she had. And look, we're talking fifteen years ago, you know what I mean, you know, or ten years ago. Why? How many grades? I don't remember a social studies project, I don't remember a social studies test, so I just feel like, you know, if, if it was a, if the curriculum was across the board, you could say, well, I had this quiz, I had, I had two tests, I had four homework assignments, and I had three classroom assignments, and she, she got a B plus, she didn't get an A. You understand what I'm saying?
There's also a difference between curriculum and grading. So for example, as a teacher, I didn't, I graded homework once a week.
Right.
Teacher B next to me graded every single night what they were getting.
Right.
Now, she, at the end of the day, it was the same percentage that the student was receiving, but in teacher B's class, Amy received five grades.
Is it?
In my class, if you're counting ten percent for homework is the overall grade, when you put into your grade book, that's ten percent. So whether or not teacher B has fifty grades, or teacher A has ten grades, it's the same percentage.
Right, but are we grading homework or are we not? Do you grade homework once a week or not?
Do we have a standard, though? I guess the question comes back is, in our curriculum, cause I'm not a curriculum writer, in our, is it fall under curriculum to determine that you need to do three quizzes or three tests or five tests?
No, curriculum are the skills and standards that are being taught.
Right, okay.
And we, if you look at our curriculum, it's broken down by month, what's being taught in a order. And I'll be honest with you, when a teacher comes to me and says, I have this great idea or I wanna pull this novel in, can I go in order?
Absolutely.
I'm the last one to say, no, you need to follow the order. Because they're coming up with their own and that's that creativity part.
Yes.
So but I, what I feel like what you're talking about is, how many grades are there? But I think it's coming to the understanding that, in some cases, some teachers will grade every single thing because they want it, they feel like it shows value. For me, when it came to homework, some, teacher B will place a ton of emphasis on homework because they feel it teaches responsibility. That wasn't my philosophy. I had to give homework, but you know what I mean, so.
We have a minimum, like, you have to have a minimum of this many tests.
So that's what you're looking for, a minimum of.
We have to have a minimum of this many quizzes. We have a minimum, it has to be a certain percentage, like, you can't, like, it's, like I said earlier, you can't have one, one test in history and that be your basis on the report card grade.
And we do express desire for minimums from all of our teachers.
Right. But is it written, like, is it, is it?
Policy.
Policy.
I don't know the policy now.
And that's something we can absolutely look at, it does.
I mean, it's not necessarily the homework thing, that was just one of the things.
That's just an example.
That's just an example.
Homework's what happens, I'm sorry.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just talking about the consistency then, you know, I know that everybody's getting a fair shake. That's my thing. I feel like everybody should just get a fair shake and know what the shake is. That's all I'm saying.
I, I think all these points that were being brought out are great, I think any, with any teacher and anyone, there's gonna be a fair amount of subjectivity as far as what they think is important and things like that, but I think that there's value in all your questions, and like I said, I'd be happy, cause a lot of this is more curriculum aligned, I'd be happy to work with Sean, Sean and Jay and anybody else if I do a part of it.
I mean, I, I want to remember, we, one of us would come and be a part of your committee as well. We'd be more than happy to.
It's a link to feedback from, from anybody, because sometimes the way it's viewed in the community, it's different the way it's viewed here internally.
And again, we're not trying to, to, to stop differentiation and we're not trying to micromanage, but it is something that comes across, you know, as a little, like a gray area.
Here's one thing that research shows, and that is, that you should have a fair number of assessments per marking period. If you have too few, it's not a true reflection on the child's understanding. And everyone has a bad day, the child could do very poorly on one test, and if they get two tests in a marking period, fail one again and nail one, they'll be lucky if they get a C or a D. So, what I.
And these tests should vary.
Right, that's, and also assessment needs to go beyond written tests. Written test is nothing more than memorization, except for mathematics there, it's applying math concepts and skills there. But there are many other ways that we assess in the classroom, and I hope we don't lose that either. Your interaction, the types of questions the child asks, their response to questions, when they're doing group projects, are they participating, are they just sitting back and letting you two do the work and I'm gonna get more than grade? And so there are many other ways we need to assess a child, but I think we need to have a fair number of grades to, to make up for those, a poor analogy, an analogy would be, if the baseball season this year ended, the end of April, Chase Lively would finish the year the worst batter in the, in Major League Baseball, but by the end of the season, he's probably gonna be back in two fifty, two sixty. Why? Cause he's having multiple opportunities. So I think that's what we're all saying, we need to make sure we're having a sufficient number of opportunities for a child to show what they truly understand.
I only brought it up because I'd rather be proactive, since we're talking about the grading committee, so you can think about it and maybe continue this committee, since we were absolutely bringing it up at our retreat.
That's good, I mean, we're on the same page as far as changing something. And here's what I can say, if you know that we're too hard to teach science and craft, and sometimes if you go too far with science, you take away craft, and sometimes if you love to be too creative, you take away the science, it needs to be a good blend, and I guess you need to bring a lot of people together and have continued dialogue about the best way to give guidelines, but also lead that ability to differentiate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, not to tell them when to do it, but as much to say that in this, this is what the numbers are. I don't think, do you feel as though that by setting that standard of asking that expectation that that interferes with the craft?
I think just to give a quick example to, to kind of springboard what Chad said, you know, if I were to say you have to give at least, every trimester you have to give at least five math tests, well then, maybe they eliminate a couple of projects with that creativity where some kids will excel because they gotta get that some test. I think that's the balance that you need to find is, we wanna, I understand minimums and I understand guidelines, but I think there are also.
But it's introducing it and talking to staff members about the fact that maybe some of those projects can count as a test, and maybe some of those things can count differently, but it's looking at it as, looking at it differently. And I think that with Mr. Peely's grading committee, this was kind of that first conversation, because I'll be honest with you, like, it shocked me to find out, people hold on to the rates, like, it is what it is, what it is. So to even discuss grades and try to build that cohesiveness, so now as an entire middle school, from fourth to eighth, you have one expectation, I feel like that's the, the start.
Right.
And now we can build on that conversation and then moving forward.
And there, I mean, it's just a lot, I mean, like I said, I think this is, this is great, we'll definitely continue it, I'll invite anyone who wants to join, and then you get into different subject areas, like, some teachers only see kids twice a week where some kids stay home every day. There's so many variables, but I think this is definitely not the result tonight, but it's definitely, I, I understand your concern and I'll, I'll continue it, we'll talk about it at the retreat and I'll continue it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Yes. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Peely. Go ahead, Chad, you have the floor.
Okay, I, I wanted to share with the board members, Patty and I attended the Camden Gloucester County Board meeting in May, and they threw a curveball at us. We were at dinner and they usually have a, a speaker and who stood up were several representatives from the New Jersey School Board Association headquarters, and they asked the people attending that night, I had it with me, to support a resolution, because the governor Christie is, was appearing before the Supreme Court, referenced the pensions and health benefits, and he was going to approach him with some proposals that our association felt is a big mistake, and they asked us to vote on it. Patty and I quickly started reviewing the item they gave to us, we were, we were not comfortable voting without at least speaking with the president of our board, we felt comfortable listening to what they had to say and making a decision. So I did call Sam and talked to her on the telephone, and then she said, finish listening to the discussions, you and Patty discuss it, and then vote. The biggest part of this thing that the governor is trying to push through, that he got in his way, with, would be with health benefits. Right now, you're looking at a person who retired out of education, and I get health benefits and I have a pension. Once I retire, the state is responsible for the cost of my health benefits. What the governor wanted to change was that the local boards, everyone that retires from your school district, after they retire, you have to pay, pick up the cost of their medical benefits, which would be enormous. So they wanted us to support a resolution for them to go and argue that our membership across the state does not support the government moving in this direction, we feel it would be a horrific burden on the local taxpayers. So we voted, we talked over and we voted yes to support this resolution. And just so you know how it came out, I kept track of the votes. The totals were, there were twenty-three school districts represented between the two counties, eighteen school districts support, supported the resolution, four, no, and two of them voted no because, just like, we felt uncomfortable first, having not been able to discuss it with the whole board, and they couldn't get a hold of their board president, so two of those four no's were because they just didn't feel comfortable voting and they didn't stay, and they had one statute. So the vast majority of those board members that were there that night, representing their local boards of education, supported this resolution that, and New Jersey School Board was going to present at these hearings, that this, and they were gonna pump out the figures, what it would cost local communities if we had to pick up the cost of my health benefits after I retired. So that's, that was the resolution, and it just was, it never happened before, at least in my attending the meetings, and so we just wanted to make sure we at least got back to Sam, the board president, and kind of explained what was going on, and.
So they supported, they supported the vote, I would say the board would put the false.
No, opposing it. New Jersey School Board Association's opposing that, because he would actually have to change the statute, it's in the statutes that they do that.
When does this go, when did, so where is this in the process?
The hearings were held in place, actually, this, what the article I gave appeared in the cover post the morning after we were at this meeting, and you can read, read article like a leisure.
It's scheduled for May twelve.
Yeah, so the hearings have already started, they made a comment in there, I'm not sure, I have, I haven't, I was away all last week, so I haven't seen the news or read the paper. But he.
And the REA's getting thrown over that too.
The what?
And the REA have to think it off. The teachers.
Uh, they don't.
The NJEA.
You mean, the NJEA, yeah, the REA, I'm trying to, oh, I mean, it's case association, okay.
Do they, do they have an opinion? The union?
They have a whole lot of opinions, the NJEA just wants Chris Christie to fund the pension, like you said, that's it.
And that's what I'm asking, I guess the question is, is I was asking, is it the amount of money that they have put in there, to put in some of these ads, are they helping fight it, are they helping fight the school, are they helping the school boards fight against?
I think they are.
Yes.
And you know, in all fairness to the current governor that's sitting there, this problem didn't start with him. This problem started with Whitman as governor. Because she took more than a billion dollars out of that program, who invested it someplace else, and then from that governor, all through Republican and Democratic governors, they've allowed at times, welcome to municipalities and not have to put in their fair share that they agreed to. As I look around this table, I can tell you, I'm glad I went into education, I also had an opportunity to go into industry, and I did it because, one, I think I wanted to help young people grow and be something, but two, I may not make millions, cause I'm not going to the industry, but I'm gonna be a comfortable income and I'll have a nice pension when I retire. And now they wanna take that away from people that retire and people that will retire, that are working in the business. And it all started because they stopped putting the proper amounts in.
The next will be, it won't be just that, it'll be, it's not even about just taking